Welcome everyone to the work session, July the 13th, 2021. This time I'll call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is Leadership Owensboro Project, Drew Hardesty and company. You're up first. Can I give him background or you're gonna give him background?
It's great.
There were three of us that judged all the projects that Leadership Owensboro as a group. They, how many, six groups, seven?
Uh, eight.
Eight.
That's what I thought, eight. And they all took a different avenue of trying to do something for our community. And three people judged them and this group had an idea that we all thought could be accomplished. And it was, I'm gonna let them tell the story now. Please introduce yourself, state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Drew Hardesty with Wonderboy Media, 200.
East.
East Third Street.
New employee, I guess.
I'm sorry?
New employee?
Uh, I own the business.
Good thing you know where you work.
And then I'm Emmy Emily Woosley and also 200 East Third Street.
Okay.
Beth, if you don't mind, you can go ahead and play this video real quick as an introduction.
You want me to help you?
I hear.
That's our audio.
Mine's a gateway comics bit.
Bluegrass in the background.
So our concept was the Brews and Toons Trolley. We had spoken with some people from the city about the availability of a trolley. And as far as we know, there are two trolleys. And so it was our hope or our plan to use one of the trolleys as it typically does as a route for families and people like that. But the second one is our Brews and Toons Trolley. We had the idea of scheduling musicians through Visit Owensboro, helping us with that to make sure that there are some sort of live music on the trolley as people are riding around town. Ideally, the trolley would stop at various bars or establishments for people to get off and maybe go in and eat, grab a drink, get back on. In our dream, this takes place within the district so that people can have those cups, you know, on the trolley. We, I don't know if you saw on the video, but they were showing some wristbands. And so we had talked about possibly purchasing these wristbands at maybe the convention center at that booth they have there right at the entrance and then hopping on the trolley as it passes by. And so then you're showing, you know, you're over 21, you're able to have these cups and the trolley can take you around to the various establishments. And now as, after we were judged, we were, it was recommended to us that the area of the trolley would travel would be extended beyond just downtown. So maybe South Frederica, maybe somewhere on 54. And I know that we kind of get into expanding the district so that people can have those open containers on and off the trolley. You may have seen some familiar faces in that video. So we had, JD was in our group. We were very grateful to have him. I'm sorry.
An empty cup.
Empty cup, those were all empty, yep. But he was able to kind of counsel us on the legality of certain things and hopefully stay within the realm of the law, of course. Do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, so a lot of people really like the pedal taverns that are in Nashville and other bigger cities. And while that's something that could happen in our city at some point, the trolley is utilizing a resource we already have, so we don't have to make the investment into a pedal tavern. And then also, it's just a little quieter. If you're eating at the bistro, you don't necessarily want a pedal tavern with a bachelorette party rolling by. But if the bachelorette party is on the trolley, you don't necessarily hear them.
Something else I would like to point out, since there's no other groups from our Leadership Owensboro class, is that ours was the only project that made money for the city.
Yeah.
So, you know, you're selling wristbands, you're selling the cups. And so the city is making a little bit of money to pay the trolley driver or maintenance on the trolley or gas or whatever, you know, needs the city might have for that money.
And then just one more thing. Whenever we had the concept to put a musician on there, I reached out to Chris Jocelyn, obviously, who was in the video, and then also Andy Brasher, who's opening his venue downtown as well. And they both really loved that aspect of it and made it something more than just, oh, let's have alcohol. It's making it more of that destination and attraction. And we definitely have the musicians in town to staff it adequately.
I guess at this point, we take any questions you might have.
Okay, any questions?
So the obvious question is, they're on the trolley, they go to these different places, they get off. And then does the trolley just keep rotating and come by and pick them back up when they're ready to leave or whatever? And then when they're done for the night, obviously you have no idea how much alcohol they may have consumed. How do you ensure they get home safely? You probably have this in your report, I just didn't hear it in the discourse.
Those are good questions. So in our understanding, the trolley does kind of continue on. And so it's basically taking you to the various attractions that we have downtown or wherever it ends up going. And then as far as when you're finished for the night, we did talk about having spots, parking spots designated for Uber and Lyft that we have here in town so that when they're dropped off, there's an Uber or a Lyft waiting and then they can get a ride home. Because we do 100% want to keep everyone safe.
Thank you, Commissioner Cassel.
Yes, Drew, I was wondering, are you guys planning on staffing a musician every Friday or whenever the trolley is running, constantly on the trolley?
That's our goal. We had, our mentor for the project was Dave Kirk with Visit Owensboro. And we were hoping to kind of partner with them to reach out to musicians. There's tons of musicians here in town and getting together some sort of online scheduling sheet so that every, you know, maybe this only runs once every Friday. And so every Friday, there's a musician scheduled. You saw the little tip bucket in the video, so you know, they're gonna be making some tips off of people that are getting on and off the trolley. And hopefully Dave can work with us to kind of help schedule that out. I don't think, you know, if a musician misses a week, it's a big deal, but we really want to make that kind of an attraction. And I think having that live music, whether it's a banjo or guitar or upright bass or something on the trolley really kind of helps make that an attraction.
Mr. Samper.
Drew, guys, hey, I love your idea. I think it's, I think it's, I think it's great. How do you monetize it? So you get on, is it free or do you pay to get on or how's it work?
Ideally, they would, because it's essentially, we thought about putting a kiosk somewhere, but then that would be expenses and building something. And we were, you know, told that the, that main desk at the convention center could kind of accommodate, you know, since they do Owensboro ticket, I think, they could accommodate selling wristbands. And so we would, you know, get the word out to people if they want to get on the Brews and Toons Trolley to go by the convention center, get a wristband. And then at their stops, you know, you've got to purchase, I believe, the cup in order to be in the district to get your first drink. And so, you know, you're making money there as well.
Very good, very good idea. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Right, I mean.
I think it's a great idea. How long did you say, like the time that would start and when it would end? What are you thinking?
I think we're pretty open to that.
Yeah, we haven't finalized, you know, is it every Friday? Is it once a month? But the trolley already runs surprisingly quite late. I think on Friday and Saturday, it goes till nine, maybe even 10. I can't remember exactly. But, so it really is something you could start with the current route schedule and not have to extend the hours, see how it goes. And then you could even level it up, you know, for bigger events when it's in town or say Friday after five, which goes a little later.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
So Mark your spoons deal, I guess, is out, right? Where you play the spoons?
Yeah, I've had to hang those up.
Okay. And you'll play the, and never mention free in any of these things because somebody gets all upset when somebody says it's free. So I always talk that there's some revenue. We appreciate you coming. I invited everyone in all the groups to come and tell their story because there were some really cool ideas and it was difficult judging to try and see what could get, what could actually get accomplished in a decent timeframe. So, and with the major on your committee, I'm sure you all checked all the boxes.
Yes, sir.
That held a lot of weight in judging, so.
I think Chief has been waiting to throw some rocks at me. Been involved in it, sir.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, Spectrum Booking, Spectra Booking Guidelines and Updates. Ms. Alexander, General Manager. Help yourself.
Hi, Laura Alexander, 501 West Second Street, General Manager at the Owensboro Convention Center and Sports Center. Thank you all, Mayor and Commissioners, for allowing me to come up here and talk to you guys about our plans for fiscal year 21, 22. But before we go into that, I wanted to kind of take a moment to go over our mission statement and our booking guidelines because we have a new commissioner here as well as some returning faces. And obviously during the pandemic, we really did take the time to reevaluate our mission statement and really hone in the details of it to make sure that our policies and procedures do line up with that. Doesn't matter which one, there's two.
Draw.
There we go, that one works. So our mission statement is that we impact the local community by bringing quality events to Owensboro and managing their success. And as you can see, we really did focus on three key fragments. And the order in which they appear is not a coincidence. So the first priority for us is that we make sure that we impact the local community. That's the intent of the convention center when it was being built. That's the purpose of most convention centers across the country is that they are there to impact the local community. Again, a lot of times y'all have heard me say this before, convention centers are called lost leaders because they do operate at a deficit, but it's at the expense of encouraging more shopping downtown around the areas, more restaurants, as well as the hotel economic impact. Because we all know, we've seen the studies, that if someone comes into town and stays the night at a hotel, they're gonna spend more money in a community, whether it's at gas stations, their entertainment options, the restaurants, every, everything when they stay the night. So the first thing and the most important thing for us is to make sure that it is an impact to the local community. Next, it's bringing quality events to Owensboro. And we highlight quality events because we're not gonna go out and book anything and everything that just comes across the desk. We're gonna make sure that it's a good event. And an example of a bad event is there's been a dinosaur show that rotates across the country. This dinosaur show has been known to scam people into buying tickets and then not showing up and keeping their money. So we do make sure that they fill out a promoter application that has the references on there. We check with other Spectra buildings to make sure that they've paid their bills in addition to that. And we want to make sure that we are bringing quality events to Owensboro for the people in the community here. And then the last part is managing their success. We don't want to just come in here and, you know, with every event, we want to make sure that we're a part of that event. We want to help the planning process. We want to encourage them on certain things that work, certain things that don't work. But we do want to make sure that everyone is also receiving a fair price that cover the expenses of that event. So that is the part as far as managing their success. For us, it's all about booking the right piece of business at the right time for the right price. So with that, I'd like to go into our booking guidelines. This one's a lot smaller font, so I apologize. These are the booking guidelines for the Owensboro Convention Center. And these were set when we first opened the building and we did take a look at them through the pandemic and we evaluated and changed just one part of it towards the end. But our first priority is to book conventions and trade shows. And that's because they have a significant economic impact to the hotel community. As you can see, conventions and trade shows, they have to have a minimum peak hotel room night. And depending on how many hotel room nights and how much space they're using in the center determines how far out they can book. So you can see the conventions and trade shows can book as far out as three months from the date that they arrive. And yes, we do have a convention that is already booked for 2025 that meets those criteria. The second priority is they can be booked at 18 months. That's multi-day annual public shows. Again, multi-day because we talk about the economic impact and staying overnight. The annual public shows because they do bring a significant amount of revenue to the building because you've got the vendors that are coming in and staying and paying the fees. You've got concessions that's usually associated with it as well as rentals. So there's a lot more opportunities for revenue for the building in addition to the economic impact. The third priority can be booked at 12 months. Those are our local multi-day events. An example of this might be like your Pigtails and Calyx consignment sale that comes. Because they're saying multiple days, again, there's multiple opportunities for additional revenue, but it is a local event. So it should not have a higher priority such as a convention that's gonna come in and bring 700 room nights. And then our fourth priority, this is the one that we modified just a little bit during the pandemic, single day local events. These are your weddings, your banquets, your small corporate meetings that are just one day. Those can be booked at six months out. However, if they're gonna contract with us a minimum of $3,000 for a food and beverage minimum, then they can book at 10 months out. So that might put like your nonprofit banquet that's gonna be doing a dinner ahead of a one-day corporate meeting for 20 people. So these are the guidelines that we have for the convention center. And we talked about, again, it's booking the right piece of business at the right time for the right price. And there are, you know, exceptions to all of these. They can, anybody who is in one of these, they can make an exception in writing to me as the General Manager and I will review it and then approve it or deny it. Next is the booking guidelines for the Sports Center. It's pretty much the same kind of aspect. It's focused on bringing people and events to the community so that they're staying in the hotel rooms. So you can see two years out, we allow multi-day events that have a significant impact to the community to be able to book. Here, it's just a minimum of 75 hotel room nights because there's not a ton of business that's gonna go out there and book more than that for the Sports Center since it's just one space. These, an example of this would be your two A basketball tournament that comes in town. All the teams are staying at the hotels around here, but it is a three to four day tournament. Our second priority is allowed to book at 18 months out. Those are events that generate a minimum of $50,000 in building revenue. Those are gonna be your concerts, your family shows such as Harlem Globetrotters that are generating a very large amount of revenue for the building. The third priority and fourth priority are kind of close and lumped together. They're basically the same thing. It's just multi-day events that generate significant revenue for the building. But the third priority is given to our tenants who are hosting multi-day tournaments. Our tenants at the Sports Center, Kentucky Wesleyan College, Owensboro Catholic High School and Owensboro Thoroughbreds, if they're wanting to host a multi-day tournament such as the Owensboro Catholic Independence Bank Classic, they have a higher priority than, say, these other multi-day tournament events. Because their tenants, they're wonderful partners of ours. And then your fourth priority at 10 months are your tournaments that we were saying that are being hosted by people outside of our tenant group. That would be like McLean County who's coming in to host a tournament over the two or three days. We want to make sure our tenants have the first priority of dates over them. Our fifth priority and sixth priority are basically the same thing again. It's single day events, but we're giving our tenants the opportunity to request those dates ahead of time and they have a higher priority. So again, I'm not going to, Kentucky Wesleyan has a game scheduled on one day. I'm not gonna bump that for just a single day event, local event. They have the higher priority there. Do y'all have any questions about that before I start going into our projections? Oh, sorry, I do have one other thing. As far as our pricing and how it's, we configure it, there's a lot of different factors. We don't have a set price for every single group and say you have to pay this and this is what, if you don't pay it, then you can't come. We actually negotiate and work with them. And there's a lot of factors that we can, that go into the pricing. For example, how much space they're needing. If they're needing the whole building versus just one room, then we can work out a discount. How much room, you know, hotel rooms they're generating because we know that the city and community are gonna be gaining some additional funds there. The food and beverage revenue for the event, the time of the year. If someone's looking for a weekend during our busiest time of the year, I'm not gonna be able to give a discount as I would maybe in July on a Sunday. Excuse me, the degree of cost sensitivity. We do work with nonprofits and offer them a discount as well. The potential for a repeat and referral business, obviously if it's an event that comes three times a year, they could get a better discount than someone who's just coming one time. Total revenue generation for the entire building, you know, again, are they getting concessions, food and beverage? Are they getting decorator services, exhibits, things like that? The prestige factor, this is a fun one. You know, we've hosted the world championships of cornhole here. We will be hosting the national archery tournament. It was supposed to come this past year, but it's coming, they had to postpone till later on and they're booking for multiple years. So there is the cool factor as far as hosting an event. The total attendance, because obviously the total attendance for the entire building does help us go out and get additional sponsorships. The more people you have, the more sponsors are willing to come on board. The lead time of an event, if someone comes to me and says, I want to book an event for Friday, I'm probably gonna book it. I'm not gonna turn it down. I might give them a little discount. And then just historical data, if they've been great partners with us, if they pay their bills on time and they're just, you know, they've had events elsewhere, then yeah, we might give them a discount because we know it's a quality event. So any questions on booking guidelines or projections yet before I go into what we're planning on for 21 and 22?
I was just curious, if you had someone to say they were gonna fill up 75, 80 rooms and they decided to have something, you know, in three months instead of, you know, 12 months or so that you normally have. If you had something open, would you go ahead and make an exception for them?
Yeah, it all depends. That's just the, how soon they can actually contract, like how far out. But, so if it's 10 months out, that's the earliest they can contract. If it's three months, anything below 10 months, it's kind of free game for whoever comes in. But the way we always do tournament is they have to have a signed agreement and pay their deposit for it to be considered a definite piece of business. If someone, if I have a hold, let's say that you have a hold on a certain date, but you haven't signed a contract and Mayor comes in and requests that same date, I'm gonna give you 48 hours to sign your contract and make your deposit because you have the first hold. Otherwise, then it would go to him as the opportunity. Anybody else? I'll try to run through this part really fast. For our upcoming budget for fiscal year 21, 22, you can see that we're not quite back up to our pre-pandemic levels. What we're estimating is about a 75 to 80% return on revenue as well as attendance at these events. Normally we have, say at the convention center, about 275 events to 300 events. We're gonna have about 213. And those events are gonna be smaller in attendance. So again, Sports Center, kind of the same thing. We are expecting some of our bigger events such as our Harlem Globetrotters and Bull Bash, for example, some of those other events that did not, were not able to have an event at all this past year that they will be returning. But again, the attendance will be about 80% of what the pre-pandemic levels are. Some really cool things that have come out from the pandemic. As far as our fiscal year 20, 21, the past fiscal year that we were in, we had 18 major cancellations. These are big conventions that we had planned, big other annual events. And we were able to successfully rebook 70% of those, which was saving about $300,000 in revenue. About 90% of that is all coming in this next, or in the current fiscal year. So there's only a few things that are gonna be pushed out to maybe a year later from that. And we were also able to safely host, there's a typo there, it's actually 190 in-person events during the pandemic between both buildings. Most of them were weddings and receptions, again, smaller in scale, meetings, our Craft Tucky Arts and Crafts Expo. We were able to do some live concerts as well as live on the line, which was an event that we created to safely host outdoors. Our murder mystery dinner series, Cork and Cuisine Quarterly dinners, and then the Kentucky Indiana All-Star Game that was recently in June at the Sports Center. Some more success that we have is that we do have some brand new conventions that have never been to the convention center before coming in this next fiscal year. We just had the Kentucky Water and Wastewater Operators Association. They had such a wonderful time, they're already asking for the dates for May of this upcoming year and are wanting to look at an annual contract from there on out. Precision Planning is a new event that's coming up here soon. Fear Expo is a fun one. It's a trade show that is basically geared towards, say haunted houses and stuff as far as wholesale. And he's also looking at some other opportunities for businesses in the community. And so we were able to connect him with some different people in the community there. Kentucky Broadcasters Association, and then at the end of this month, we have the General Association of General Baptists that are coming here to Owensboro. Those, those right there represent over 2,200 room nights. And so we're really excited about that. And then another really nice kind of thing that happened during the pandemic is that we were able to book three cheer and dance competitions that were relocated on the road from previous locations. So I know that there was one that was originally in Evansville. They called us on a Wednesday and came here on Sunday. Because they had such a great experience here, they're now rebooking for this next year and even having more events. So one of the cheerleading events has decided to have two cheerleading events. Those right there just, that represents $42,000 in building revenue and over 500 room nights. So those are some new events that you're gonna see on our calendar that we didn't have. And that was actually because of the pandemic. Of course, we've got our returning conventions that we're excited about. Our annual ones that we see every year, we miss them dearly. The Green River Firefighters Association, I'm not gonna go through the whole list, but you can kind of see a lot of these that have already signed their agreements for this next budget year. Our net income is expected to triple compared to the current year. Again, that's still pre-pandemic levels, but we are expecting to triple our income. And then as far as revenue on the books, these are some new records, as I'm calling them, that we've actually set and beat. We have over 60% of the annual budget from the convention center already booked. We usually strive to get 50%, but we had, it's actually a little over 60% now at this point. And then we've had the record high of 12,500 hotel room nights that are already committed for this next coming year. And normally we're in the 8,500 to 10,000 range. So that's some pretty good news coming for next budget or for the current budget year. And of course, we've got REO Speedwagon on November 1 at the Sports Center. It was rescheduled, this is the third time. And we've got this new exciting sports flooring that's coming to the convention center. We had them come out and measure the flooring for last week so we could go ahead and get that placed in order. And that's it. I just want to thank you guys for the time to come up here.
Any questions?
Laura, thank you for coming. The first question I've got is you talk about satisfaction and obviously rebookings is a measure of satisfaction, but do you have a tool or a metric you use to assess customer satisfaction? Because I know one of the areas you can run into satisfaction issues is food quality. And I'm not saying your food quality, but that's always a struggle keeping a chef in the kitchen, the mass meals, et cetera. So how do you assess it? Do they get an online survey when they go home?
They do. Yes, they get an online survey. I know we had some issues with our food and beverage back in 2014 and '15. Our scores have been about 4.3 out of 5 since then. And so our chef is amazing. We just sent the press release out. She's actually been there for several years in the kitchen making all this stuff. So yeah, it's, it's great.
Yeah, I remember when Dean was there, we went through several chefs and that can cause chaos, even if they all are good at what they do.
Yes.
Because it's just so much product to put out.
It is.
Another question is, how do you track the motel room numbers? In other words, you obviously want the biggest bang for your buck, but how do you track that? Does CVB provide those numbers or how do you get them?
So in the past, we, we've worked with the planners directly to find out how many room nights that they are needing so that we can be able to determine if they, which criteria they meet before they even book. And then afterwards, our front desk used to call the hotels directly and say, or send out a sheet and they'd say, here's the list of all the events that we had in the past month. Can you put how many room nights were actually picked up out of their block? And they would send them down there. So normally it is just the two downtown hotels that we kind of are tracking, but if it is a larger event, then we will send it out to the other hotels.
Okay. And then the other questions about the Sports Center. So in terms of utilizing Sports Center, and I wouldn't necessarily jump to watch these, but I wondered, you know, is our facility there big enough to host roller derby or arena football?
Not, well, arena football, I know that they were looking at it previously and that was one thing, one reason why you should even take out the stage. They could not do anything with the existing stage. Now, it's still pretty narrow. That's something that arenas nowadays are made a little bit more with, but there is the opportunity for booking some of those things.
I think roller derby might be quite popular in our area.
Yeah. You'd have, you'd have to have a local team to probably do that because a lot of those teams don't normally travel. It's kind of like KWC basketball. They're going to go and play the other cities that are actually there.
Okay. All right.
I'd be happy to have a tenant, though.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And Laura, I apologize if any of these things are blindsiding you because we basically get, you know, what you're going to do, so we don't really get a lot of the information.
Yeah.
But, you know, when you're talking about the new sports floor, what kind of revenue do you anticipate generating? And will that be such that you're not going to, you're not going to be knocking out some bigger event to try and put the floor down and use it?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the part, again, when you go back to the mission statement, that we make sure that we're managing our success. We're not going to be able to go out and offer people free space because obviously there's more things that go into the free space as far as costs are concerned. You've got your housekeepers, your setup crew, your teardown crew. We've got to make sure that all of those costs are covered. And then, of course, you've got your opportunity for revenue with concessions, with ticketing fees. There's other opportunities that you can try to help make to cover those costs.
Okay. And when you're talking about costs, and I know you've got some being countered over there, do you have trouble with collections at all?
No, not really. We do a very good job of vetting them out, number one. We do ask that all of our, all of our events have to pay upfront, five, at least five business days prior to the event. If you have an event such as Kentucky League of Cities, who has a very reputable reputation, we have a form that they can fill out to apply for direct credit. And so at that point, we check their references, we make sure and check their, all, all the information they have to fill out, and then we can sign off and they can get a bill 30 days later.
So of all your things that you offer at the convention center, what do you think is the biggest revenue generator that you have? Is it the rooms? Is it the concessions? Is it parking? I mean, is it, is it broken down to any percentages?
Yeah. If you look at the convention center, for example, we have a budget of about $3 million. Almost $2 million of that is going to be food and beverage.
Okay.
And again, what we normally do is that we will discount the space based on the food and beverage that you're getting.
All right. I wondered how that, anybody else?
Yeah, Laura.
Commissioner Castle, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering, as far as the floor manufacturer, have they committed to a, a date when they think they'll have that finished and you can start using it?
Yeah, so it's actually in our court right now. We've already kind of designed the color and everything that we're going to go with. When they came last week, they, and took the full measurements, the actual measurements, they were able to determine that we could actually do four basketball courts instead of three. And so we had to look at the purchase of two more basketball goals in addition to that. So that's, that's where we're at right now in looking at the contract to actually purchase the floor. But even in best case scenario, you're probably looking at mid-September before we were able to get the floor in.
Is that a good, go ahead, I'm sorry.
What color did you?
Yeah. So the manufacturer actually recommended the gray floor. It's what Louisville is using right now as well. And the reason why is it doesn't show a lot of dirt and scuff marks, but then also with all the halogen lights that we have in there, it'll really reflect off the floor and make for really nice pictures, but not blind the basketball players or volleyball players.
Okay. Thank you very much, Laura.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, next item on the agenda, item for OMU Customer Support, General Manager Kevin Frisell. And he's brought a whole bunch of people to back him up, so.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Kevin Frisell with OMU. We're at 2070 Tamarack Road. So I want to talk a little bit today about OMU's customers, customer support and some of the things we've done as we've come out of this pandemic. Make sure I've got that. Okay. We start out with our mission statement. As you all know, our mission is to, to serve our community by providing reliable and quality utility services at the most economical cost. And coming through this, as everybody in this room has been through this pandemic, we, we say we're pandemic tested. We've had to do a lot of innovative things to, to move forward and to keep our business going during the, during the pandemic and including how, how we have worked with our customers. So to go back a little bit, just to kind of set the stage, this is a timeline for the pandemic. The, the blue bubbles are governmental actions, usually the governor's actions, and the green are what we did. And just a couple of things I'm going to point out here is the governor, on March 26 issued the, the healthy, healthy at home executive order, and then on May 8, the order to require utilities to, to suspend disconnections. But nearly two months before that, on March 16, we'd already voluntarily suspended disconnections. We suspended, waived late fees, and we also reconnected those folks who had been recently disconnected. So we were a little bit ahead of the game there. And then in, on November 6, or in October of 2020, the governor allowed re, reissuing or restarting of, of customer disconnects and, and late fees and whatnot and to begin on November 6. So on November 6, we reinstated late fees for commercial customers, but we did not do that for residential customers until January 1. And then on, in early December of 2020, we began to slowly ramp back up customer disconnections for non-payment. And if you see on the next slide, this is just to give you an idea, you can see that the customer disconnects, our normal level on the left side before the pandemic, we went to zero during the, during the time when, when we weren't doing disconnects. And then we slowly started ramping back up in December and now we're back to, to more or less the pre-pandemic workload that we did. Also during the, during the pandemic, to help customers who are getting behind with, on their utility bills, and the governor's already, he, he directed to do COVID payment plans. And so we did that. We automatically set up payment plans for all of our customers that were, that were behind with their payment. We started out with about a little under 1,900 customer accounts that had payment plans with about a $1.5 million balance of, of payments that are in arrears to us. As of July of this, this past July 5, we had 687 accounts that are still in the payment plan and that balances down to $316,000. And then once again, we set these payment plans up for our customers. The governor's order required a minimum of six months. For most of ours, we went well beyond that for the, looking at the customer's balance to take those payment plans out further to, again, minimize impact to our customer. And then we did a lot of communications with our customers to let them know about this, help them understand what was happening and to get on the payment plan. But we also, during this time, we waived about $450,000 worth of late fees. So you can see how our COVID payment plan worked at the beginning. You can see we were up at that one and a half million dollar level. And it slowly brought the, the customer balance down for each customer. So it was kind of slow and gradual. So we tried to work this out so that it was, helped the customer get, get their, the balance due paid off, but it wasn't an undue burden on the customer. So that's, that's what we did during COVID. Talk a little bit about our customers and the information that, that, that you may or may not know. We serve about a little over 25,000 electric customers, a little under 25,000 water customers, and nearly 3,000 telecommunications customers. We still run across a lot of folks in the community don't realize, but we do combined billing. So we're the billing agent, not only for our services, water, electric, and telecom, but for RWRA and city sanitation. So the OMU bill that most people see, the bottom line number includes all of those services. And we issue just under 30,000 bills every month. And then our customer service team, they take about, they take, and this is in-going and incoming and outgoing calls, but they talk to about 9,400 customers every month. So we do have a lot of, of, of personal touch with our customers. Another thing that, that is not probably something that people think about, but talk a little bit about the billing and collection process because that's important to, if you're a customer, what's going to happen if you're struggling with your bill? And our meter read routes are staggered so that people don't get their bills on the same day every, every, all the customers don't get their bill on the same day. But for this illustration, we'll assume that on the left-hand side, your bill comes on the first day of the month. That blue box, you have 15 days to, to pay your bill, and that's 15 business days. So we don't count weekends in that count. After the 15 days, you have a grace period of three days. So really you have about 18 days to pay your bill with no, no consequences. And that can be extended for the weekends. After that, 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 you're into the orange box where we, we'll give you a notice. You know, you haven't paid your bill, your bill's late. That notice timeframe is, happens within about a 12-day window. After the notices go out, the customers have had time to, to get the notice, then we do courtesy calls. So we call all these customers unless they've previously called us, but we, we talk to each customer that, that is in the collection process about, you know, what the status of their bill is and hopefully to work out a way that they can, they can pay their bill or get on a payment plan to pay their bill. After that, if it's still not paid, then you're in danger of disconnect in that kind of a pinkish box. There's about a, you know, a 10 or 11-day window on the disconnect and that's when the customer may get disconnected. So if you add all this up, it's about a, you know, 40 to 45-day window, but from the time you receive your bill to the time that we will actually come out and disconnect you for non-payment. So for our customers, one of the things that, interesting statistic is for those customers who are scheduled to be disconnected, only about 31% of those accounts actually get disconnected as scheduled. That means about seven in 10 of our customers are able to, to come and work with us, either pay their bill or work out a payment arrangement so they can keep their services going. And that's clearly, that's, that's what, in the best interest of the customer and us. So we want them to come talk to us and we do not want to disconnect any customer. As I mentioned, the timeline, timeline can be impacted. Customers can ask for an extension. We will, we will work with them on that. We put them on payment plans. There are some customers on medical alert status, which extends that disconnect time even farther. And we don't disconnect on Fridays, so that will extend that time as well as holidays and in, in extreme weather, we don't do disconnection. So again, trying to, to make disconnection a last resort for the customer because that's the last thing that, that we want to happen is to have a customer that has to lose their So what happens on the day of disconnection, if you're, if a customer's scheduled for disconnection on a certain day? We will send a field technician to their, to their location to do the disconnection. However, the field technician can delay until noon of that day. So the customer still has a last chance to say, hey, I'm going to call in, I'm going to talk to customer service, I'm going to make some arrangements. So the, the field technician can delay that. And if they have done that, then they won't be disconnected. If we have to do a disconnection, we only disconnect one service at a time. Typically that'll be the electric service that we disconnect first. Then after five business days, if the customer still hasn't been able to make arrangements for payment to work with us, then we will disconnect the second service. Typically that'll be their water service. And then after five business days, if they still haven't been able to work with us on their account, then we will close the account. Closing the account allows us to, to use any deposit to be applied toward their balance. And then once the account is closed, the customer will have to reapply for service. And we never want to get to that point in our, in our process, but that is the process that we go through. So now I'll talk a little bit about what we do to help customers who are struggling prevent from getting to that point. One of the things that OMU has done for, for a number of years, ever since I can remember, is we partner with Salvation Army and the Community Cares Program. We budget annually somewhere in the realm of $50,000 for that program. It's to help customers pay their utility bills. In 2020, we provided $52,000 to Salvation Army. Our budget for this year is $60,000 for the Community Cares Program. We also encourage our customers and our employees to donate to, to customer, to Community Cares. Customers can do it on their bill. They can also round up their bill and give, round that up to the next dollar, which that will go to Community Cares. And our employees can donate through payroll to Community Cares. And in the, during the pandemic, those customers and employees stepped up and we had an additional $24,000 that was donated to Community Cares. So that's about, you know, $76,000 that went to help folks, help folks with their utility bills. We also do a lot of customer outreach. We have during COVID with all the different assistances that were available, trying to get that information out to our customers. We provide this information. We use social media heavily, our webpage, our Facebook, all those social media avenues as well as direct mailings to, to help our customers get the information out there that they need to help them if they're struggling with, with their bill. As I mentioned, we did go above and beyond on the payment plans for our customers during COVID and we communicated with them as well. And again, work with them, we work with lots of customers on those payment plans. And just a little bit about in general, our customer care, we are local people, local service. We take that model very seriously because it's, it's very descriptive. During the pandemic, we closed our office, as a lot of places did, to in-person traffic. And we did a lot of business through our drive-through window. We never closed our drive-through window. We have a lot of customers that want to come personally and then do their business with OMU, and we did a lot of that work through the drive-through window. Our customer, our office is open back now for, for in-person traffic and we do get a lot of folks that come in and, and visit with us. We also have online no-touch ways to pay your bill to try to make it easy for our customers through our online portal. We did, you know, especially during the pandemic, try to stay in contact with our customers. We expanded our phone room. We have a lot of, again, we get a lot of calls and we make a lot of calls. And then we also have payment options for our customers, as, as many other utilities do, with budget billing and levelized billing. Again, ways that they can help manage their utility bills. And then, as I said, we use social media to talk about the assistance, that they can make payment arrangements with us. You know, during the pandemic, we tried to really influence our customers to use no-touch payment options so they wouldn't have to come and wait in our drive-through line. And then we do a lot of communication, as I mentioned, when a customer is struggling and, and are on the, in danger of getting disconnected, we, not many utilities will make sure they call and talk to each customer before they, before they disconnect them, and we do that for all of them, as well as we direct mail letters them and include information in their bills. So there's a lot of ways that we try to take care of our customers. In summary, we believe we are proactive and customer-focused. We're committed to supporting our customers. You know, it's, we never want a customer to be disconnected and we know they don't want to be disconnected either. We work with our customers to, you know, on, on things we can do to help them with payment options, to help them if they're struggling with their bill, to help them stay ahead of that. We encourage them to, to try to, if they believe they're going to have issues, to get out ahead of that and not wait till it builds up on them. We had a customer during COVID who called in and, and had gotten behind and she said, well, I knew that you weren't doing disconnects, so I just decided not to pay my bill. And we worked out a payment plan and she did not get disconnected once we resumed. And she said, I'm thankful that you guys. resumed. And she said, I'm thankful that you guys, you know, are understanding. And she talked to a live person and worked that out. So we have tons and tons of stories like that where our folks are talking people through and helping them out. And that's the last point I can make for our customers. If they're struggling, or if they believe they're going to be struggling, the best thing they can do is pick up the phone and call our customer service reps. They are very good at what they do. They will work with the customer. And we encourage folks to call 926-3200, talk to one of our customer service reps, tell them what's going on, and see if we can work something out to prevent them from getting to that ultimate, which none of us want, which would be to have their services disconnected. So that's a little bit of overview, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Good job, Kevin. And I thank the guys and gals that drive those red trucks are just fantastic, as well as your customer service people. One question, or several things I'd like to ask you. What's your goal for your telecommunications side of OMU?
Well, we are-
Sorry about that. I saw that look in your face, but-
No, no, that's a good-
I get people telling me, man, this is awesome.
Our goal is to cover, to have fiber to the home, to the entire city in about the next two, two and a half years.
Okay.
We are about approaching half, covering half of the homes in the city. We're not quite there yet, but we're getting close. And we're rolling out new segments as we speak. We're doing a build-out for the next segment of the city this year. So our goal is, in about two, two and a half years, to have the entire, every resident city have the ability to have our fiber to the home, our high-speed, reasonably-priced internet service. Our small business has, that we introduced a little over a year ago, has really taken off, so much so that we have a backlog for small businesses that, and they don't necessarily have to be in an area where you can get fiber to the home. What we do is, on a case-by-case basis, work with them and say, okay, we have infrastructure there, we can provide you service. So we encourage our small businesses to call in if they're looking for internet service from us. And it doesn't necessarily have to be in a segment we've already opened for fiber to the home. So our goal is to have the entire city covered in that timeframe.
And so that 3200 number is the number to cough it up as well?
Yes.
Okay. You know, as the world moves towards renewables, how are we doing with coal and all the other stuff that goes on at OMU?
We are, as you know, we shut down our coal-fired plant. Now, we haven't burned any coal since last summer. And we're taking our power from big rivers. We have, most of our power comes from big rivers. We also take about 25 megawatts. It's actually about 5% of our usage comes from the Southeastern Power Association, SEPA, it's hydro power. So we have a little bit of renewable there. And then, moving forward, our Big Rivers Agreement ends at the end of 2026. We'll be doing another study. I know, Mayor, you love it when I talk about studies, but-
You better start now.
We are starting a study, kicking it off in early 2022, so just a few months, about less than six months from now, to look at the next phase of power supply for the utility. And we will be looking at all aspects, including renewable options, you know, all the renewable options that are available to us will be included in that. So it'll be a very holistic look at, again, with our goal of having reliable services at the most economical cost. But we think renewables will be a part of that picture as well. But we need to look at it and be ready for 2027.
So Big Rivers is still burning coal?
Big Rivers is burning coal.
And we're using that at the-
Right. 95% of ours is Big Rivers, and that's still coal-based. But, you know, Big Rivers is looking at diversifying as well with some solar projects. So, you know, our business is moving toward more and more renewables as part of the portfolio, and we will be going in that direction as well.
Okay. Could you give us a little brief, I never heard of Community Cares. Sorry. What is that?
Salvation Army does that for us. So we provide the funding, and the Salvation Army does the, works with the customer to do the vetting, look at the need, and distribute the funds to the customer for them to pay their bills. The Salvation Army actually pays us directly on the customer's behalf. So it takes us out of the business of trying to have to determine need and determine, you know, and to determine which customers have the greatest need. Salvation Army does that for us. And Sonya is-
100% of the funds that are provided-
This is Sonya Dixon. She knows many things that I don't.
And is it 12 months? They work 12 months a year, Salvation Army?
Yes. And we fund them. Usually, they ask us, they tell us when they need funds. We usually have two fundings of them per year for that total of 52,000 or 60,000. And then, go ahead.
They don't charge, I'm Sonya Dixon with OMU, just for the record. They do not charge any administrative fees or anything like that. So 100% of those dollars are used to benefit customers. One of the questions that we often get is, they benefit OMU customers? They're not for other utilities. They're strictly for those that are provided through OMU and through those that we bill for. But it's been a long-term partnership. It predates any of us being here, I think.
Even JT?
I don't know JT. Even JT. So it's been, it's been a great way to vet and kind of move through that process. The funds that are donated by employees and by the community are added to the funds that OMU donates or provides. And those are, 100% of those are used to assist customers. And there are a number of ways they can do that. Audra's here, and her department is great at helping people round up their bills, make a one-time gift if they like, donate toward one particular family. They can do all sorts of things if they'd like to. There's a lot of flexibility there.
So is this a 501(c)? I mean, if you donated $5,000, is that a tax-
Well, we have a note on our bill that lets you know that you need to talk with your tax expert on that one. I won't try to get some-
What about it, Mark? Just curious about that, because that could be advantageous.
I said I wasn't going to put these folks on the spot, but Mayor, since you put me on the spot. Of course, that was Sonya Dixon. She's our manager of public relations and communications. And then next to her is Audra Foster. She's our customer service supervisor. She does a great job managing the folks that talk to the customer. She talks to a lot of customers herself, has oodles and gobs of experience on that. And then Michael Moore is the director of customer and shared services. The customer service organization is in Michael's area at OMU.
Thank you.
Next question.
Kevin, so I'm understanding that the customer service people actually have the authority to work out a plan when a customer calls in with a problem?
Yeah. I think Audra approves them, but yes, they do.
Yeah, that's good. On your internet service expansion, does that include the, I guess you call it the fringe area on the other side of the bypass?
Right now, it only includes areas that are in our electric service. So if you have our electric service, that you would be included. If it's outside the electric service area, it's not included.
And will it ever be, or is that just something that can't happen?
Never say never, but right now, we believe we're restricted to staying within our electric bounty. The telecom division of OMU is a part of the electric utility.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Glenn?
Yeah. First off, I think you've done an excellent job. In the time that I've been on the commission, you've taken OMU to a much better financial position, and I think our energy future is much better, and you have great employees. Having said that, over the last six months, Facebook, Nextdoor is full, newspaper are full of tragic stories of people who've had their electric cut off or their services cut off. And you say it's seven out of 10, 31%. Doesn't that seem awfully high to you? I mean, because if I'm, you know, if I'm looking at this, Mr. Frisell, and I'm saying, okay, my priorities are pay my mortgage, make sure I've got food on the table, and if I have a medical issue, I'm going to buy medical, you know, I'm going to pay my prescriptions, utilities wind up fourth. And that may be unfair. I agree. You deserve to be paid. But 30% just seems awfully high to me. Is there anything we can do to get that number down? And I know you are working. I know you were all diligent trying to do that.
Well, from our perspective, you know, like I said, we try to work with the customer to provide them all the options that we, the tools in our toolbox, you know, with payment plans. But at the end of the day, you know, the customer has to make a decision that we can't make for them on how to manage their funds. We never want to be in this position. You know, the last thing that these folks want to do is be talking to customers who are in danger of disconnection. We all know that. But we have to, you know, we're a cost-of-service-based organization. We have to collect the, if we provide the services, we have, the customers must pay for them, because if they don't, we don't have any other avenue to pay for the costs, other than our revenues from our customers.
And when you renegotiate or set up a payment plan, is that usually over six months, eight months? What's like the longest you go?
I think we have some going out 15 months.
Okay. And the other question I've got is, we've got, other people are complaining about the meter issue, where the meter misreads, either it shorts OMU on what they owed, or they're over, or they've been overpaid, and at some point, you're going to remunerate that. I know we had this issue probably six or seven years ago. And the tone I'm getting from OMU is that this somehow is the customer's fault. The meters measure the data you guys provide. So I don't understand blaming the customer. And I would hate to get hypothetically a $1,000 bill because my meter didn't read right, and we were shorting you. I'd feel obligated to pay you, but if I've got food and rent and drugs to pay for, I can't do it. And that's what I'm hearing from some people.
And I completely understand that. No one wants to get a bill that says, hey, you owe us, and it's because we didn't bill you properly. But they did have the service. It's not like they didn't have the service. They were receiving the service. Our rate ordinance says that once we, when we discover that, whether it's we underbilled or overbilled, because in this particular instance you're talking about, we also had some that we overbilled that we credited their account. So what we do, and we are working, learning as we go, one of the lessons learned from this is the way we communicate with the customer. We weren't maybe as clear that they could pay that back. The average for this particular three-phase, single-phase meter billing error was about $450 that the customer owed us. What we didn't clearly communicate, but what we have started to do, and we will do in the future, is that the customer can pay that back to us over, that goes back 36 months. Most of these went well beyond 36 months, but we're only going back collecting 36 months under our ordinance. They can pay that back in monthly payments over the next 36 months. So that $450 turns out to be $12.50. But I agree, it's not, it's a painful thing when we say, we made a mistake, but you owe us money. We don't like to say that. We hate doing that. I get a monthly report of billing accuracy. Our billing accuracy for the month in which this happened was 99.7%. So that includes these 45 that we had an error in. You know, 99.7% of 29,000 bills, that's means, you know, we have, what, 100 bills that were out of 29,000. So they do a great job of that. But we do make mistakes, and we don't like to have to go back and say, we made a mistake, but, you know, the services were provided. And but we do give them the same time, basically over the same amount of time that they, that we missbill them. We give them the same amount of time to pay that back in payments, monthly payments. For those customers that we overbuild, they get a credit immediately on their bill. There's no, we don't take that over time. And then to go back to something, because my statistic may have been a little bit misleading, and the folks back there corrected me, or make sure I'm clear. The 31% is of those customers scheduled on a given day. If we have 10 customers on the disconnect list, only three of them actually get disconnected. But we disconnect probably 300 to 400 customers a month out of those 26,000 meters. So if 31% of our customers were having trouble, yes, that would be a completely different ballgame. But it's a fairly small, these numbers are fairly small. Now, if you're one of the ones that are impacted, certainly, it's not small to you. But as a percentage of our total billings, they're not that many.
Okay. Well, the other question I've got is, we're moving into a climate change cycle, whether you agree with why it's happening or not. We're seeing out west 117-degree temperatures, 120. And you can imagine, if you add those temperatures to our humidity, it's, air conditioning isn't a luxury. It's a necessary requirement for life. And one of the arguments that I hear you making, and I'm a little concerned about, is you keep saying, well, they choose to sign up the service. You're a monopoly. Who else am I going to buy air conditioning and heating from? Is there another competitor I don't know about?
Even if we weren't a monopoly, there are very few that can afford to provide services without getting payment for the long term. So-
And I agree with you. I'm not questioning that.
So I don't think it's a matter of, and I don't want to come off, you know, being insensitive to the customer, because I wish you could see how these folks work with these customers, and we are very sensitive to that. But at the end of the day, if the customer can't pay for the service, and we've exhausted all the efforts that we can make, and there are lots of opportunities out there, and we try to guide them to those places they can get help, you know, we can't continue to provide service without payment. That's just, you know, we couldn't continue to provide quality and reliable service to the rest of our customers if we didn't do that.
Okay. And the last question, I thank you for being patient, is, the last question I've got is, the budget billing setup. How easy is it for a residential customer to get that? And if they have these problems, let's say they have a history of late payment, does that inhibit their ability to sign up for budget billing? Because in my experience, if you've got budget billing, particularly if you're elderly or on a fixed income, it makes it easier to pay the bill. You don't have those fluctuations.
In order to get budget billing, all I have to do is call and set that up. I'm going to have to ask the experts if they have a, if they already have a payment plan, does that preclude them from going on budget billing? Because they're already basically making a, have a payment plan, a budget, as it were.
Yeah, because that's usually what I'm told. Some folks, I say, first question is, are you on budget billing? When they tell me they can't pay their bill.
But as soon as they can, you know, I would recommend for those folks, that's a good thing. The levelized billing is also a good thing for helping folks manage, and so they know monthly what that bill's going to be.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you all coming, and more importantly, I think you all done an excellent job. But I am concerned in the times we live in and with the poverty level in our community that we do everything we can to help these people. And I know part of it is they have to help themselves, but-
We share your concerns, and that's why we spend so much time and effort trying to work with customers. And again, like I said, if customers are having issues and struggling, call us, and we will do everything we can to work with our customers to make sure that we can continue the service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, Kevin, I think that's it. I'm sorry I got a little, oops. You got good stuff? Bring good stuff on.
Kevin, I appreciate you coming here today. I think you guys do a wonderful job, all of you. I think you all do a great job. Just a couple questions. How much money do you actually write off in uncollectibles each year that are-
It's about a quarter of a million dollars. It has gone up during COVID.
Yeah.
We've budgeted for a higher amount, but I would say a quarter million dollars is around number.
Yeah, that's a lot of money. You know, the thing with people getting their electric turned off, a lot of people make choices. And I'm in real estate, and I walk up into people's houses, and I see iPhones, I see cigarettes, I see all kinds of things. And I think some people need help, but there's other people who choose not to get helped because they make bad choices, you know. So you guys can do nothing about that. You know, if you're, if it's more important to have a cell phone or cigarettes than to pay you guys for electricity, that's, there's nothing you guys can do. That's another observation I've got. So there's nothing you guys can do about that. One point I wanted to make, for the future, you know, young people use a lot of technology. Would there be possibility to have an app where you could make a payment to you guys or even-
We have an app.
Okay. Can you make a payment?
Yes.
Through the app? What about Venmo? Would that be possible at some point?
We don't do Venmo.
Okay. Because I know, my kids turn me on to it now. I kind of like it. I just wondered if, so I started using it. I was like, this is pretty cool. So while you were talking, I thought, well, that would be pretty cool if you could do that. But I don't know, just a thought.
My understanding is our app is very user-friendly and easy to set up and easy to use to make your payment.
Okay. Like I said, you guys are doing a great job, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And through Community Cares, everybody up here can donate and help those people out instead of just wondering whether or not we can help them out. So that gives us all an opportunity to do something.
One thing I will say is, we had several employees who stepped up during the pandemic. Of course, we were fortunate. We were able to work. We had to work to keep our services going through the pandemic. And we had several that donated to Customer Cares. And I think, again, goes to show the level of employees that we have and the care they have for, not only doing the job every day, but for helping with the community.
City manager?
Mayor, I was just going to point out as well that both the city and the county contributed $300,000 each during COVID to the Green River Cares Fund, which provided in part food, but also utility assistance. but also utility assistance. So there's been a considerable amount of money available from the, from the public sector to assist those who maybe have struggled over the last few months.
And that's one of the areas that we've directed our customers to, to go to that, to those folks and work through. You know, we, we, the, the good thing about the Customer Cares program is that says it takes us out of the business of trying to determine need. Salvation Army does that. We are, we are not judgmental on our customers. We, we work with them in every way, shape, and form to help them pay their bill. Unfortunately, sometimes they can't.
Yeah, if you go get your car fixed, they're not going to let you have it if you can't pay for the new fuel pump. I mean, anybody that's been in the private sector understands how that works, and it's difficult sometimes. Thank you, Kevin. Thank all of you all for coming. Appreciate it. And we certainly appreciate OMU in more ways than one.
Mayor, while Angela's getting the clicker for her presentation, we normally try to keep these to about an hour, just because you have other scheduling conflicts potentially. So if we want to defer Angela to next month, we can happily do that. Of course, she's on staff, and we'll be here next month anyway. So if there's a time crunch or a preference to defer her for a month, it's not a problem at all.
I got a 1:30, so I'm, I'm good till 1:30.
How long do you think it needs?
I think just bottom line, how we do, you know what I mean?
Certainly. Yeah, I'll, I'll try to pare it down from what I had. All right. So, good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Potem and Commissioners. I'm going to present an update on our two TIFs, the Gateway Commons on 54 TIF and the Downtown TIF. And although we've been talking TIFs since 2014, I was going to present a brief introduction to what a TIF is for those in our viewing audience. So what is a TIF? It's a financial economic development tool made available to cities by the state to finance needed public infrastructure improvements. The state will disburse 80% of the reported incremental state revenues to the city for approved public infrastructure. There are very many components and details to a TIF. So I'm going to cover this at a high level, reviewing just the three, what I consider the main components, that being the TIF district, the TIF incremental tax revenue, and the payout of the TIF proceeds. So what is the purpose of a TIF district? What that is, is just a physical geographical area that establishes the parameters within which the incremental revenues, both the state and local level, are captured and where the TIF monies are also spent. You can find an outline of the TIF districts on our website. There is an interactive information map. If anyone wants to go to our website and look at those maps, they can also enter an address, and our map will tell you if it is or is not in the TIF area. TIF incremental tax revenues. So what does that mean? The state makes an annual distribution to the city for incremental tax revenues generated within the TIF district, up to the maximum amount awarded for no more than 20 years. This includes state sales tax, state property tax, and state payroll withholding. The incremental tax is derived, derived by reducing post-activation annual revenues by the base year revenues. This provides our measure of revenue growth, and of this annual incremental revenue amount, the state will disburse 80% of that to the city. The state requires local participation in the TIF. The city offers up city property tax, city payroll tax, city payroll withholding, and city net profit license fees. We have an independent fund in our accounting system to account for the TIF activity for each TIF. Payout of the proceeds. The state provides guidelines on how the proceeds are to be used. So we withhold 2% for the cost of administration of the TIF, and it's also used for approved public infrastructure. The administration involves, it pays for city staff time, the, where we pay the state consultant, where we pay our TIF consultants, our TIF attorney. It, it pays, all that's considered administration. And this is my picture-is-worth-a-thousand-words graph. You, it's a bird's eye view of how the funds flow. So you can see on the left-hand side, 80 and, and 20% to 100. The 80% is the city's incremental. Same as the right-hand side for the state, those flow into the city's TIF fund, and the red arrow shows it coming out of the TIF fund for the approved public infrastructure. The Gateway 54 TIF. This TIF was made possible by a consent decree between Regional Water Resource Agency and the Division of Water. The award amount from the state is $20,571,000. The city activated with the state January 1, 2018. We also have a master development agreement, or MDA, between the developer, GW Development, RWRA, and the city. This was activated January 1, 2020. This MDA lays out the responsibilities and requirements of each of the parties. The TIF proceeds are distributed based on the MDA as follows. The 2% administration fee, with the balance then being split 65% to the developer with a maximum of $27 million, 22% to Regional Water Resource Agency with a maximum of $7,249,000, and 13% to the city. Now, I, keep in mind, I mentioned 27 million, but the state awards 20.5 million. So those maximum amounts are the state and local funds combined. To date, the city has received state incremental tax revenues of $1,014,731 for 2018 and 2019. We are waiting for the 2020 dispersment. The local incremental tax revenues of $523,023 for 2018 through 2020. The city has used those TIF proceeds to fund the Green Belt extension, the Fairview Drive extension, and administrative costs. Due to revisions made to the TIF, and I brought a folder just to show you, this is the documentation for amendment number two, and this is just legal, the legal paperwork. So as I said, it's a lot of detail and a lot of information. But due to revisions that we've made, we've made two sets of revisions. The state has transitioned the Gateway TIF to a percentage of completion payment basis, which can reduce the annual distributions if construction isn't completed on a timely basis. The actual incremental revenues have been less than the consultant's estimates, primarily due to a delay in the opening of stores and partially also due to COVID. We got the Downtown TIF, was made possible by the area being, being considered a blighted area, with the Crown Jewel of Projects being the third downtown hotel. This is projected throughout all the TIF documents to be the TIF's single largest revenue producer in the Downtown TIF. The award amount from the state for the Downtown TIF is $24.5 million. The city activated with the state January 1, 2018. The TIF proceeds are distributed as follows. 2% administration fee to the city, debt service incurred on public, approved public infrastructure projects, and the Glover H. Carey Bridge lights. To date, the city has received state incremental tax revenues of $1,403,47 for 2018 and 19. The local incremental tax revenues of $1,489,983 for 2018 through 2020. So until the third hotel is operating and generating tax revenues, our general fund is subsidizing the TIF-eligible debt service approximately $500,000 each year. The actual incremental revenues were higher than the consultant's estimates the first year, and less the second and third year due to delay in construction of projects and partially due to COVID. This concludes my presentation. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Just one quick question. Is there a number out there that would indicate with or without the hotel, what the, what the reimbursement is on the Downtown TIF? Is that quantifiable?
Um, if I understand your question, are you asking, like, what might our award from the state be if the hotel is not built?
Correct. But thank you for saying it the proper way.
Well, I just wanted to be sure I understood your question. Um, yes, Mayor, based on construction that has taken place thus far, and this information comes from the consultant, because I had asked the same question.
No, they didn't. Okay.
I did, Mayor. So our consultant provided a number that if that third hotel is not built, that our award could potentially go down to 9 million from the 24.5 million from the state. So when I say it's the crown jewel of the TIF, what I mean by that, it's the single largest revenue producer of the TIF, and primarily, it's the sales tax. That's, that's where we get the biggest revenue stream from the state. So potentially, it could be nine, I'm not saying it would be.
Right.
But from the consultants, potentially, it could be 9 million instead of 24.5 million. And what that means is, that difference would have to come from our general fund.
Okay. I was just trying to get my arms around that as well.
It's a painful realization.
Okay. Do there are no other questions?
No one, but it's probably something the mayor would have asked, well, possibly. Can you insert another project to replace something like the third hotel that would still work, or you have to go back and re-do all this?
Are you asking me if another construction project could be built in the TIF area to help?
To replace, yeah, hypothetically.
The biggest thing is the sales tax, Commissioner. You would be hard-pressed to find another project that's going to produce the same. And if we do have any material changes to the TIF.
There you go.
We have to report and negotiate that with the state. Should we have any other material changes, they may put our Downtown TIF on the percentage of completion payout as well, which could delay our payments from the state.
About costing the general fund more, more money, essentially.
Would not, we take ahead?
Thank you, Ms. Wanniger.
You're welcome. That was a very good question.
And, and that would be really something we would try to avoid at all costs, because the state has changed their posture over, on TIFs over the last five to six years, really. And so anytime they have the right to open that up, they, they try to take advantage of that and try to claw back what they can, which they feel like is in their financial best interest. And so in this scenario, if they were to have to reopen that TIF, then it would be at their advantage and to our disadvantage from a financial perspective.
Yeah, to add to that, TIFs that have been approved by the state subsequent to our TIFs, they all have percentage of completion aspects to their payout. And so they've taken advantage of any TIFs that have to go back for modification. They change that to make them the same on that, on that payment basis.
Mayor, just quickly, I'd like to acknowledge, the amount of work that Angela puts in, you saw that file, but, but Angela, Danag Galloway, and Whitney Brown downstairs do a fantastic job. If you think about it, they have to reach out and contact every business that operates in, in the Gateway Commerce TIF, in the Downtown TIF. And so that could be even a plumbing company that may be based on West Parish, but if they operate in the, in the Downtown TIF during the year, they have to contact them. So it's how many entities, I mean, in the hundreds.
It's...
That they have to contact. It's a considerable amount of work, and they do a wonderful job. I routinely get inquiries from other cities, asking how we do it, and looking to us for advice and guidance on how to manage these TIFs.
Commissioner Magley?
When we're talking about a different project downtown on the TIF, as long as you kept it a hotel, say it's a different hotel, a different location, that wouldn't, would that change everything?
Commissioner, I would not see that myself as a material change. It would obviously have to be within the state local footprint. Uh-huh, yeah. I would not see that to be a material change.
Do there are no other questions? We'll thank you again.
You're welcome, Mayor.
I'm glad you're doing it, not me. I'm really glad. All right. Next item is city project lists. City Manager Nate Payton.
Thank you, Mayor. As is the case most months, you have in your pocket a project list to provide the updates of the ongoing projects and issues that staff is delivering to complete on time and on budget. So happy to answer any comments or questions should you have them.
My comment is, thank you very much for letting us know the project costs, because that really makes a big difference to me when I'm looking at these and seeing how they're being completed. So.
Yeah.
Anybody has any questions, please raise your hand. Commissioner Glenn?
On Fire Station Two, right now, we're in the design phase. Have we calculated in the increased cost for building materials into the construction cost? Is it already wrapped into it?
I'm, I'm, I'm sure they have. Leland would normally handle that. He's not here. I don't know if...
I mean, I didn't mean to ask that question.
I'll get back with you on that question, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Hearing now more information or business that needs to be taken apart here to the work session, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor, any give a saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose.